And I do appreciate your psychological. I know that I hear a lot about kids who miss the, you know, all of our student population is going through some sort of withdrawal, you know, that they missed their, missed their friends, you know, so I do agree with you. The more we can keep it normalcy, I like the Zoom ideas we're having, the chat groups we're having, the, the ability to get people connected is important. So thank you for that comment.
Any other questions for Dr. Ransom? Dr. Ransom, this is Julie Dandrio here. I do have a question. When we talk about the ten or less, talk to me about how that affects the business workplace or this meeting space. For example, today at work, I was next to more than 10 individuals in my office. Explain how that is different from a social function?
Well, that's a very, I mean, in a, in an enclosed environment, I think that pertains in a business too. I mean, if in the same room where, where you're really, if you're closer than the six feet, you know, I think.
What if you're not closer than six feet? I mean, if, I mean, does that, I mean, is that a, is it still the ten or less in a room or where's that line?
Are there any absolutes on that? No. I think, I don't have an absolute answer for that. You know, I think there are a lot of businesses that may be able to stay open, you know, if the traffic is spread out. I, I keep thinking of the hardware store or the, or the lumberyard or the, you know, someplace, maybe not the, I'm a little concerned about personal hygiene places, barber shops and hair places where the contact is so close. But there's no, that hasn't been specified because I think there's just too many variables. I hope people have common sense there. And in a group, in a business situation where there's people in a room, I, I don't think we want big lecture rooms. And I don't know what exactly what situation you're referring to, but I don't think there's any absolute answers. And I think 10 is probably arbitrary, but that's kind of the number that everyone has, has kind of come to.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions for Dr. Ransom?
No, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So let's talk about the rest of what happened today, which was pretty awesome, really. So the plan, and I think if I can speak on behalf of many of our staff, but probably not all of them, the information that was provided, the opportunity for them to watch our board meeting and under, on Thursday and understand what was expected of them coming into the classroom today, I think was much appreciated and allowed us to go much quicker than maybe some other districts have been able to do. We had some pretty awesome meetings taking place this morning. Our principals met with our BLTs, had real conversations. The teachers in those BLTs then broke up into their grade level groups or their department groups and had real conversations about narrowing that focus and what is it that we want kids to be able to know in order to meet our expectations prior to the end of the year. And there's still a great deal of work to do, but that need for, for all of our staff, or even the majority of our staff to be in the building anymore is now probably dissipated. The ability for us to get together, identify what our goals are, expectations, how we're going to ensure that we meet the needs of those kids, at least in the, in the very beginning stages of that, were, were met very clearly today. And, and now as teachers kind of know, I think most of them have packed up their stuff. They're able to go home. We have Zoom opportunities. We have other remote learning opportunities for them, and they're going to spend a lot of time in the next two or three days developing what those lessons are and what those expectations are. They will be consistent across grade level. All first grade teachers are going to have the same expectations for their kids with the ability to differentiate based upon student need, but it won't be that Mrs. Alderman has a completely different expectation of her group than Mrs. Dandrio does, than Mr. Wingert does. They will be consistent across grade level. It will be consistent across classroom in terms of when you get to the, the secondary level and you have Algebra One teachers. So Algebra One, what we expect of those kids will look very similar across all classrooms, even if they might've been different during the normal year. So we've got a lot of things still left to work out, but today was a great day. I think our teachers felt good about it. Our administrators felt good about it. There is still a great deal of unknown here. We're doing something that, that we've not done before in this capacity. Distance and remote learning is not new to us. Distance and remote learning, when we don't have access to all the things for every kid, or to be able to provide appropriate services for every kid in that environment, or to even be able to have access to all the things that we would in a normal capacity, are really impacting our ability to ensure that we know how to do this. So over the course of the next week, we're going to do an awful lot of learning, and we're going to have a great plan in place, and our teachers are amazing people. And there was some excitement in classrooms today, which was, which was great to see, given that for the last week, we've seen mostly trepidation and, and fear of the unknown. So we have a, an opportunity to do something great with our staff. Again, the vast majority of our staff, I would imagine, will not be in their classrooms tomorrow, and those that are will probably be there independently and, and not necessarily meeting with, with other teachers in that environment, but maybe through, through Zoom and other, other digital platforms. But that's where we're at with, with this process. It looks like we'll have different buildings bringing back different personnel at different rates. So I know that some of our buildings are bringing back secretaries. One of the things that, that we probably overlooked was the number of phone calls that we would get today from people asking about what the plan is, how they can address different items, even though we'd kind of put some information out there about what was going to happen. It doesn't stop people from asking questions, and, and certainly their concerns are valid, and the need to, to provide that information to them is valid. But, so we'll bring some secretaries back to be able to answer the phones tomorrow and be able to, to make sure that we get information out. We'll bring some aides back, most likely on Wednesday, to set up a, a, a Google calendar to get parents, especially at the secondary level with their kids, into the building to retrieve their materials. So that's been another thing that is, that has been asked quite a bit, is when can we go in and clean out my locker and so on and so forth. So we'll have a number of our, of our support staff helping, helping do that, making sure that we're going a student at a time and air of the building, making sure that we have the appropriate distance and that we don't have just a floodgate open up and have 100 people in a building trying to get their stuff out of there. So it'll take us a little time to do it in that fashion, but it'll be the safe route for us to be able to do it, and, and we will get to the end at, at some point. We served meals today, and we served, I think, 572 meals to members of our community, which was awesome. And, and our, our transportation staff and our food service staff did an awesome job. It was about as smooth as you could possibly imagine. If you went to any of the schools today and watched it happen, there were, there were food buses parked in the parking lot and a very neat little line driving through, telling them, here's who I am, here's what I've got, handing meals out. Our transportation staff was awesome. Our transportation staff was awesome and, and very congenial to our families. Our families were awesome and super excited and appreciative that, that this service was being provided for them. I'm sure that as we hear, as, as the word of mouth goes more and more, we'll see more and more people begin to show up for this service. And if we could serve meals to all twenty-four hundred kids, we would certainly be open to that and, and excited about doing it. So, our, our food service staff did a great job today and, and certainly meeting the unknown head on and not knowing how this would work or, or what it was gonna be like, it was about as smooth as, as it could possibly be. And, and again, I can't, I can't send my appreciation to our transportation staff enough, who all went out to every one of those buildings, met our public, made sure that they got the things that, that they needed, called all of our rural kids to make sure that they knew when we were gonna drop off and, and, and make sure that they wanted meals in their, in their, in their kids' hands. So, it was, it was pretty awesome to watch. Again, in times of crisis, it's always, it's always an, an interesting observation to see who rises up and who does incredible things for our community. And, and certainly today, we had a number of staff members that did something great and provided an incredible service for our community. So, pretty awesome stuff. Any questions about, I, I wish I had more information about what a plan looked like. The reality is I just don't and it's going to be different at every grade level. It's gonna be different. We have had conversations about making sure that, that if grade levels are going to use digital platforms, that we have a plan in place to ensure that if, if our students don't have a device at home, that we can get them one. So, we're, we're in conversations about that. But before we, before we make a definitive plan about handing them out, we wanna know how many we're going to need to hand out, who has access to them already at home versus who needs to take one of our device, so, devices, so on and so forth. The waiver form is now out, and so this waiver form asks for a number of things. At some point in time, we will have to have a special meeting next week for the board to approve the waiver form. And it has to be to KSDE by April the eighth in order to be approved by the state board on April the thirteenth, I believe. So, the, the waiver calls for a number of things, including how many hours we're asking to be waived off of the, the minimum requirement. It also asks us to develop a plan for learning, how we're going to address learning for all kids, how, if we're going to use a digital environment, how we plan to do so, how we plan to interact with our kids in that environment, how we address students with identified needs, including special education and title services, how we're going to deal with social emotional needs of our kids, what counselors are going to do, what social workers are going to do. There are a number of different aspects, how we're gonna continue to communicate with parents through this process. So, we met as an admin team today to really start looking at what we wanted to, to state within that, in that waiver form as to what our plan was. I think we've got a great start to head down that path. But all of these things will, again, be coming very rapidly for us and, and in an ever-changing environment. As today, we kinda had this sneaking suspicion that maybe things would change. And here we are at about five-thirty when we get the notice that certainly things are going to change for us and, and they will continue to change. And I wasn't aware that the government, governor was getting ready to make a statement. Again, we had our suspicions, but apparently that follows suit with the county statement as well. So, it will change day to day for us, certainly week to week, probably month to month, certainly. So, any questions about where we're at with Mr. Cunningham?
Dr. Cobb's, Chris Cunningham. So, the additional waiver, this is, or the waiver that you're talking about now, that is different than the one that we had to have turned in by the thirtieth? Cause didn't we have one?
April, when I said April thirtieth?
No. I thought we just had one that we had to sign that we had to be in by March thirtieth. Or is this the same one?
So, that was for the meeting. That was the meeting notice waiver, because we did a special board meeting. This waiver, so we've, we've really done three waivers in the, in what will be the last week. One was the meeting notice waiver, one was a waiver for food service, which got away from the USDA guidelines in terms of only providing food for our kids and only for, for free or reduced kids, but giving us access to feed all kids in our community. So, that may be the waiver that you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that's.
And so, this will be the waiver that we identify and fill out to ensure that we don't have to meet the minimum hourly requirement. Because without having our kids in our building, there's no way that we're going to meet the, the one thousand one hundred and sixteen hours. So, this is a, a mandatory waiver and it gives us some latitude to make up what I, if I, if I did the math, like two hundred and twenty-eight hours of instruction that we're going to miss out on in this change of environment, at least in terms of face-to-face instruction. That's a lot. That, that is a lot of time. So, this waiver gives us some opportunity to try to make some of that up in different capacities.
And will all districts see that two hundred, the same number hours or we're all gonna be different?
So, it'll, it'll be dependent upon where they're at in their calendars, how many snow days people had, all of those things. We had, I think, eight hundred and eighty-eight hours logged already. And, and still had, I think if you look at the, the total numbers, we still had four or five snow days built in. And that was, the, the change of recess had a huge impact upon us this year, which was a, a very positive thing for our district. So, we don't have near as many hours to waive maybe as, as some other districts do. But the other side of that is that we don't host as many hours in our district as, as some others do. We, we have a hundred and seventy-nine contract days where we see other districts into the hundred and ninety contract days. So, they will certainly have a different waiver requirement. The difference is that we're not asking to waive the total number of hours that we would have logged on a normalcy. We're asking to waive the total number of hours to get us to the minimum requirement, which is direction from KSDE.
Thank you.
Dr. Cobb's, Harold Winger, thank you for the updates. I think those are good. I, I wanna compliment the staff, the admin, the teachers, the communication's starting to come out. I'm hearing from parents, I'm hearing from kids. You know, I think as Dr. Ransum said tonight, that, you know, we gotta talk about the social, emotional, psychological. So, I think the more information comes out, the, the less the stress is. So, I think that's great. I also think it's important to say, if you need a device, like we said Thursday night, you can have a device. And if you need internet, Dean's done a great job in August, clear back to, this is something new. If you need internet, you can get internet. So, I think there's a lot of great things our district has already done to put in place. And then I also think it's great as we're rolling out this digital platform, all the options we're giving. So, I, I think it'll be interesting this week as you roll it out. I think that will help, you know, bring that level of stress down. So, thank you for the team, thank you for the staff. I heard a lot of good compliments for the rural part of it. I'm sure the town, I didn't get participate in the town part, but the transportation department for the rural went very well today, so.
Dean will be mad at me if I don't break in here and say that the contract that we have with Sprint, is he smiling at me back there? The contract that we have with Sprint gave us a certain number of devices that we could hand out at that point in time solely to high school kids who didn't have internet access, this is basically a hotspot. I believe that we have a few of those left, not a lot. But we, we can now give them K through twelve, I believe. Is that correct? Whatever we have. Yeah. So, we can do so, we don't have, we don't have a lot of them. So, if there is, if there is an interest out there, we can work through that. I, I think it's, we need to be clear that we don't have enough to say, if you need internet, we'll get you internet.
Thank you for the, that is what I meant, but I was complimenting Dean.
But he, he's done an incredible job and certainly we've helped a lot of people. And it, and, and we also need to, to be clear that we're here to facilitate some of those things, that we can help people who don't have, work through some, some opportunities to get internet in different capacities, if that is a requirement for the, for the learning. Not, it won't be for all of our kids. So, we'll, we'll work through that and we'll continue to help people as best we can.
Melidia Payne, I wanted to make a comment about the device piece. Today, I already got the calls from our elementary teachers. And so, they were asking if we had devices or, you know, if our student had access to a device. Technically, yes, we do, but in, if you're trying to block out a time to have school, you know, I have four kids, I don't have all the devices for everyone. So, whereas some parents may have said yes on their response, they may not have enough so that you could have like a school time, quote unquote. So, I was concerned about whether we were giving devices out or what was happening with that.
So, we will give devices out to anybody that needs a device. And, and answering the question one time doesn't, does not preclude you from coming back and saying, look, I thought we could do this, but it's not gonna work in our environment. So, we just need to make sure that, that parents are letting teachers be aware of what their needs are and then we will make sure that we address those things moving forward. Certainly, it'll be a fluid conversation and, because who knows what happens? You know, we're dealing with technology here. It may very well be the case that, that somebody's computer goes down, crashes, does whatever. And, and all of a sudden, we're like, hey, we can't do this, we're gonna contact us, we can make sure that we take care of those things and help families.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to clear that up. And then, are you still, after the talks today, are you still planning to bring kids in for small groups?
I don't think we've even got that far. What, what we, what we mentioned for staff today was that we need to consider this environment to be one that is either done via packet learning or done via digital learning. And that the, that we shouldn't even consider bringing students in at this point in time. We want them to think about how they're going to instruct without that being an option. And not until either of those two options dissipate would we even consider that as being a viable opportunity for our students.
Okay, very good. If you do, I didn't think the other night and after the meeting, I was thinking about like the record-keeping piece of making sure, like, you keep track of who came in, you know, so if, then if someone did like test positive or whatever, so you would know who all came in contact and where they were.
Sure. The, all of our teachers have to keep a record of how they communicate with their students for KSDE. So, we'll have, we'll have a number of records over the course of the next seven weeks. There's still an expectation that we, that we do end of the year reporting in the same manner, that we are able to identify who we've communicated with, it's part of the plan that has to happen. How do we communicate with them daily or weekly or whatever that happens to be? So, we'll make sure that all of our teachers, if they ever get to a point where we're having face-to-face instruction, that they identify very quickly and, and, and in a, in a constant and consistent format who's been in and out of, of their spaces.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone is kept safe as possible.
Dr. Cobb's.
Yes, sir.
Chris Cunningham.
I feel like I'm in the media, right? Like, I'm standing up here in some news conference and.
Chris Cunningham. USA Today. I just wanna, yeah, right. I just wanted to make one comment from personal experience. My students in the rural area thought it was pretty neat to have the school bus deliver lunch. It got there a little after eleven, I think they said today, and they just thought it was a neat experience. And I just wanna say, I have no doubt that the people of USD two ninety are gonna circle the wagons and we're gonna, we're gonna do okay on this.
We, we've got great staff across the board. We've got great staff and, and I don't have any doubt that when the dust settles from all of this, that people will be pointing the finger at Ottawa USD two ninety and saying, that was what everybody should have done. I have no doubts, no doubts whatsoever. So, it'll be, it'll be fun to watch and incredible staff do incredible things and come up with very innovative models of learning for our kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's? Thank you. We are gonna move on to board reports.
No, we're gonna move on to steam dream.
Oh, steam dream. Oh, my gosh, how did I?
And I'm gonna back out and I'm gonna go get our two presenters here and I will stay upstairs to make sure that we maintain the, the current guidelines, so we'll.
All right. So, we are going to have Lori Howard and Kelly Whitaker from OHS coming down to join us and talk about steam dream.
The microphone and then this, right? Okay, we got it. Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having us today. Make sure to try to talk to everybody. This is a presentation that Mrs. Howard is gonna give you and this is one of my favorite things about working at USD two ninety. We really create a culture within our staff that they can come up with some really awesome, unique ideas and they feel confident to come present those to us and ultimately potentially have those conversations with the school board to see if a dream can really come true. So, Lori was at a tech conference, was it about a month ago? About a month ago, she was at a tech's conference and she saw these awesome steam buses. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Howard and she is going to kinda tell you about this dream that we have about this steam bus and what that might do for all of our students at USD two ninety.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here and to Dr. Cobb's for the invitation. This information that I'm sharing with you tonight is one that I shared with Ms. Whitaker when I first attended this conference. And then I also shared it with the district admin. And at that point, Dr. Cobb's asked me to come and share it with you. So, this conference is a very large conference. It happens in Texas and that stands for Texas Computer Education Association. There's roughly eight thousand educators there. So, it's tons and tons of ed tech ideas and resources and just kind of the latest things that are happening in what I do. And so, in case you don't know that, I apologize, I am the tech coach in the high school. So, I focus on helping teachers use our technology in ways that encourage authentic learning and collaboration, creativity and all of those things. So, that's my, that's what I do. And so, I actually got to present at this presentation, at this conference. And then again, came back with lots of information and we were in the midst of planning PD. And so, when I got back, we were really busy with all kinds of things. So, the next thing that happened was Ms. Tharp, our counselor and CTE coordinator, came to me with this grant application. And there's two different grant applications and one's for teacher and one's for an organization-type activity. And so, I started looking at these and my brain instantly went, oh, so this particular grant is tied to robotics and United Healthcare helped sponsor it. So, they wanted some medical or health outreach activity tied to a grant. And I had had some funds left in some activities from my farm-to-table projects from like two or three years ago. So, I thought, well, I could tie those funds into these, these small, tiny little funds. And this is what I had in my brain, is this bus that I saw in Texas. So, my initial thoughts were this money could all be combined to start the process of creating a steam bus, which is science, technology, engineering, arts and math with a focus with the medical outreach piece, thinking about how we can incorporate our greenhouse and our culinary kitchens and bringing our high school kids onto the bus and helping our students, younger students, learn how to grow food. Or they could explore what's in your food and what it does for your body, just as a starting point. So, just some general information, these are some photos that I took inside the bus. This sink is towards the back and the rear steps is where I'm standing inside. And along that cabinet are a 3D printer and there's a little lower section and there's some microscopes in there. And then they have some coding product, projects to the front. And then this is standing at the very front of the bus, looking down. And I think, is there a pointer on this? Yeah. So, right here, there's some AR VR stuff. So, there are little merge cubes and so we can start exploring with merge cubes and what augmented reality looks like and what they can do and look inside your body and your heart and that's some, some great resources. The back here is seating and there's TVs here, here and here and here. This looks like a refrigerator. And then this is the front steps and this is a coding station. And these are some items that we actually have in the middle school. So, we have some of these pieces, it's just now it could reside in a bus. And so, there's these toolboxes underneath. And then, this is really what got my attention. These are the photos of the build-out that they took a school bus and took out all the windows and used the rolled aluminum and replaced the sides of the bus. So, obviously, these are their students. This is a school district in Van, Texas. This is a school district in Van, Texas. They are roughly about the same size we are. Here's the bus, a few more photos, and they're kind of overlapped. But again, this is the, oops, my bus. Their, their bus, right before they went to the wrapping stage. And some of the photos in the back, you can't see, these are the furrowing, furrowing strips when they built inside there. So, I did some more investigation about different types of buses. Does this click work? How do I? It should be active. There we go. Okay, and so, I did a little more investigation, and would you mind just scrolling down? And if you are interested, you can see there are many types of buses that have been reconverted. This one particularly is from Columbia, Missouri. They are tied with Missouri S&amp;T, which is a large engineering school in that area. But it goes through and shows different types of buses that have been created. Some are more art-focused, some are more agricultural, and you'll see, like, they have little mini plants in there. So, I just was, and that's a food bus, so it's delivering food. And that one is a tech bus, it's a geek bus, and so, it's a very heavy tech into this one. And then, the last one is in Montana, and you can see where they actually have potting places happening in that bus. So, there were some more food for thought about what that might look like. Can you go back, hopefully? Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Okay, I can advance it. Yeah, thanks. There's one more, if you wouldn't mind. Would you just tap in there? There you go, perfect. Thank you. If you would. So, food for thought, what could we do for a bus? Yeah, if you would click on the bus, that'd be fabulous. Thanks. So, this is kind of a brain dump that I just took, like, all of our different pathways that we have in the high school. What could we teach our elementary and possibly middle school students? And so, we can incorporate ag with culinary, we have our health science. They could look at exercising and what that does for your body. You could have a whole, like, February is a heart month, so you could have everything focused on the heart. We can have 3D printing on the bus, we can have podcasting green screens, you can have aviation, you could take the bus out and fly drones with our students. Would you mind going down just a little bit? And then, we can look at construction and design. We could bring in some community members and do logistics, since that's a large job opportunity just to our north, obviously. So, the potentials are just limited to what we can think of, and what we ask our high school students to think of, like, what they would want to teach on this bus. We also explored having it be a bus for professional learning, so that we could bring our teachers on board and help them explore some of these resources that they might bring back into their classrooms. So, we can also take it out into the community and visit the libraries. We can visit the farmer's market, we can go to the fair, we can look into John Deere, partnering with them, since they're a very high-tech company. They may be interested in helping us build some of these activities for our students. And then, the rest of it is a possible phase. So, when I got all this out of my brain, I did walk up to Ms. Whitaker, and I said, I think I'm going to need a bus. And so, she was like, what? I was like, I know, I know, they've got to be really cheap, but then I've learned they're not. So, anyway, that's where we are. I was like, I would, everyone that I spoke to about this thinks it's fabulous. I had our IT kids do a SWOT analysis on it, and they came up with some great ideas about the fact that it really is a mobile classroom. It's one that we can take to all of our elementary schools. It can equalize that learning opportunity, and it can support our career pathways, because our capstone kids are going to be teaching, and hopefully, the little guys and gals are going to want to come up and be on the bus. So, Dr. Cobb's asked me to share that with you. Did I get everything on my presentation? I think, let's see, oh, questions?
Questions.
Questions.
I have no questions. I just thought Ms. Frizzle, that's...
Oh, I know. I do have, I do have several. I was at the Mace Convention just at the first part of this month, and a couple of the other tech people that I work with around the state, they already named me the crazy bus lady. They also did share with me that buses like this, there is one in Wichita, and it's impossible to get it to book, because it's always booked up. So, it can never, it's always so booked up that it is difficult to utilize. And I also can just imagine this bus in our community, and helping parents experience what their kids are learning, giving that opportunity. I just see some unlimited goodwill with that opportunity. So, Dr. Cobb's asked me to come share that information with you, listen to my crazy.
The one thing that I'll just add to that is when Lori shared it with the administrators, and she shared with us all those buses and how some of them were very specific and really only focused on one area, the feedback that we received from the administrators in the district, or they really liked that broad idea and being able to tie in all of our career pathways. So, that way, we're not pinpointing students in a certain direction, that we're really giving them exposure to a lot of things. The other really cool thing that Lori had told us about is not only are there activities in the bus, but there also are little packs and little kind of tubs that get taken with them, and the kids actually do activities outside the bus as well. And so, what'd you say, there's usually twenty-five students on the bus and twenty-five students outside of the bus, learning at all times, is what that school shared with us. And so, we just feel like there are endless possibilities with this. It would, could potentially be something awesome for our community. We had a lot of conversation about what would it look like taking that down to the car show? What would it look like setting it up at different community events if our students are willing to do that? And so, we wanted to just share this idea with you all, and we appreciate your time. And if anyone has any questions?
Chris Cunningham. I kind of sitting there thinking about it and reading it today, I kind of think of it as like day on the farm. I think Dairy Farmers of America have a thing that comes out there, and it's like this virtual deal. And I could see this very much being the same type of thing that maybe we even hit some of the preschools that are outside of, you know, 290, but inside our community. And then, the other thing I shared with some other people after reading this today, I was like, it's too bad, I think we just traded off a bus recently, like, towards the end of the year. And I'm like, that'd have been a great candidate.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
There'll be another.
Mrs. Whitaker, Harold Winger, you know, for a guy who rode a bus growing up, I've always dreamed wanting to tear up a bus. So, I can't, I can't only imagine how many people in the high school are dreaming of, you know, putting this thing through the shop class. But then, the other thing I think is kind of cool is if you think through what you just said, is let's think about all the other people, not only shop class, but technology, and all the other hands-on art class that could get involved in repurposing a bus. So, what I think is kind of cool, as I started thinking about this, is we aren't just talking about four or five kids that might get involved in this in high school. And, and obviously, all the people who then would go and take this bus on a roadshow, okay? But think about all the people who are going to have, over the next six months or years this gets put together, their hands on creating this bus.
Yeah.
So, I'm excited about it. And sure, Chris, maybe we have to take out one of the good buses, you know? Just, so what?
And we did talk about, it's a learning experience all the way around, and how much learning would go. That, that school took them about a year to get the bus ready. They took an entire school year. And you think about all the collaboration and the teamwork that it's going to take, not only with our staff, but our students, to really pull that together. It's going to be incredible, and I, that, I don't know how we could ever replicate that learning that will, would incur during that year of building, again, because what a unique, authentic experience that we'd be giving our students.
Well, when you read Linda Alderman, when you read down through the phases, all the departments that this touches.
Yeah.
It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, absolutely. You don't think they'd miss the bus? Okay.
Melodya Payne. She mentioned something about one piece of equipment that the middle school already has. So, would you be wanting to take that from the middle school and put it on that bus? Or how are you planning to get all of the things that you're envisioning on this bus?
Yeah, that is a good question. And that component is probably a $100 piece of it. It's like a mobile, it's a little coding thing. And no, we would not utilize current resources. We would, hopefully, I guess my vision would be that we would have some great sponsors. There's several that we could reach out to. And also, with the food component, I feel like there's a lot of grant opportunities to help support this bus. So, I would like, and we also, I would also like to access some of the special populations to get the CTE funds, so that they can have all of their own materials to bring onto the bus. So, if it's a culinary-focused, they're going to have their own little toolbox, and they roll it up there, and they have their, what they need. And so, there's a lot of different places that hopefully we could utilize to supply the bus. But also, Mr. Menifee, I've had to rein him in just a tad, because he's super excited, is trying to think how we can resell the seats of the bus. So, if you would like a bus seat, I think that might be an option in the future.
So, is he excited about cutting it up, or?
Every part of it. Every part of it.
He said, you get some kids to design a bus, and tell me what you want it to do, and we will make it happen.
Amen.
Any further questions for Mrs. Howard or Mrs. Whitaker?
I would just like to say, I hope we see more on this. I'm seeing that this is maybe infant stages, but I'm definitely interested in hearing more.
Thank you so much for sharing your, your vision of this project. Thank you for coming tonight to talk with us.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Get on the bus.
Okay, we are now at board reports. I'm not sure that anything has been opened or meeting recently. Does anyone have anything for board reports, if they've participated in?
I did. I went to the 2020, or, I just made that up. What were the things called that, with Mrs. Kane? The... Twenty Time, there we go. The, the Twenty Time Projects, that was very interesting. I also helped with the Sunflower Marketplace and met with the kids, and that's, that was my second year to that. And that's always very interesting to see their little interviews and how it progresses.
Did you have something, Shanda?
Shanda Alstead, and I did the exact same thing that Melodya did. We were just, I think they were at different times, and I'm very disappointed that we don't get to go back and share in the marketplace in April. Yes. Great, great interviewers that participate with.
Yeah, Linda Alderman, I, I was the marketplace interviewer too, and it's fun. It's good to see, those kids are smart. They really are smart. They know what they want.
All right. Well, thank you all for sharing that. We are moving on to our business tonight. We have Section 5.01. Dr. Cobb's going to present bids for paint. We are taking action on this tonight. Dr. Cobb's?
So, as, as Dean fires this up, I'd say, Chris mentioned that, and if we had thought about that bus thing last year, we had a bus, well, the, the beauty of it is, is that the, the five-year capital plan identifies us putting a new bus in the fleet every year. So, if we wanted to identify that the next bus coming out of circulation would be able to be utilized for such a practice, it's probably worth however much money we'd get for a trade-in to give our kids something, something to do. I know, they, they kind of bypassed some of the really cool ideas, because they don't have enough time to really get into them. But, and if you could picture what our aviation kids are doing, buying the components to, to have each kid build their own drone, having them lead the classroom. We all know that the best way to learn is by teaching. If we could teach kids how to do some, how we learn is far more in-depth than, than it would be otherwise. But to have a group of elementary kids that could then have the components, build their own drone, put it together, if we use Garfield as an example, go out to the big field at Garfield, have all of those kids fly those drones, and, and not only understand how to put it together and fly it, but learn the processes to why it flies. And you could do some really awesome things with this, could be great. And, and that's the, the beauty of what, what Lori and Kelly and the other teachers across our district do, very innovative and always looking for something great. So, that's the steam dream. So, we had RFPs out for a couple of things. This is the continuation of a number of capital projects. A portion of this is OMS, it finishes up the project that we started three years ago, I think, at middle school to replace all the tile and paint there. We had four different companies put in bids to, to paint at OMS. The recommendation for us is Pelton Painting. If you remember when we first started this, Pelton's came in, they did the first round of paint at OMS and did a phenomenal job. There's no reason why we would have any concerns about Pelton continuing and finishing the paint services there at, at OMS and at Eugene Field and covering some of the things there. So, $33,575 to complete the painting project at OMS, as well as Eugene Field, or at least us started at Eugene Field.
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we accept Pelton Painting's bid for $33,575, as outlined above.
Second.
Is there any discussion before we vote? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. And we'll move on to flooring bids.
Yep, the next part of this is floor bids. We had a number of, of different flooring companies look at, at the, the different buildings and, and different expectations that we had for this project. But most of them chose not to enter into a bid process. I don't know whether they got bigger jobs. This one's kind of disjointed in its, in its methodology, as we finish up several things and start a new project at Garfield that will probably take a couple of years to finish, as well as some carpeting at Eugene Field. But you see there, we had two, two different groups. Both of them have worked for us before. Crooks did the initial piece of the, of the OMS building when we started there. Interior Service, Surface Enterprises did it last year for us. There's a fairly significant discrepancy there in, in total. So, again, my recommendation would be that we utilize Interior Surface Enterprises at $81,930 for the tile at Eugene Field, Garfield, and OMS.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve Interior Surface Enterprise for a total of $81,930.
Second.
Do we need to put the epoxy coating separately?
Yeah, we'll do it separately.
Perfect. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0.
All right, and the last piece of this, DESCO has kind of been our epoxy group for years and years and years. And for a while, I think they're one of the few names in epoxy coatings. But there's another group that has, has come up, and, and they do some phenomenal work as well. You can see that there, in terms of the locker rooms at OMS, and we added the locker rooms to this because it was time that we needed to get it done. It wasn't actually a piece of the, the capital plan, I think, until next year, but the opportunity arose for us to do it, and, and we needed to do it. And that's about, that's about the same between the two companies, but the restrooms were certainly different to a tune of, of almost $10,000 difference between the two. So, again, the recommendation would be to utilize epoxy coating specialists to, to finish the epoxy at OMS this year.
I make a motion that we enter into a contract for epoxy coating for $39,500.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I just had one quick thing. The locker rooms, is that the same one in the basement that we did all the bathroom stuff in the bond?
No, that's OHS. So, this is, this is the OMS locker rooms. So, yeah, which haven't been touched since 1997.
Any other discussion?
No, thank you.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 7-0. And we are down to the bleacher bid, 5.03.
All right, so about four or five weeks ago, I sent out this, this bid proposal through Green Bush as we started looking at what it would take to, to address the bleacher needs. And the update, I had one responder, Harold responded back to me and said that he was, he was interested in looking at, at the bleachers. And so, I didn't get much from anybody else at the time, put it back in the update again last week, and decided to put it out here for us to at least have some discussion. And if we decide to, to go ahead with this, then great, we can move forward. If not, we can address it in different capacities. But the, the bleacher system at Ottawa High School was put in there, I think, in 1991. It is an old, old bleacher system that does not meet ADA requirements, doesn't have handrails, doesn't have ADA cutouts. Earlier this year, a child fell in between the bleachers and the wall and got their head stuck in the space. There's just a, a number of issues that... Uh, there's just a, a number of issues, uh, that exist with our bleachers and, and constantly utilizing, um, Heartland to come in and make repairs and, and ensure that they continue to work properly. But they're certainly at the end of their life and, and something needs to be done. Um, when we started this, this bond proposal, uh, one of the conversations was about bleachers in the high school. Um, and we, we had mentioned at that point in time that we weren't going to put it in the bond, um, but, but one of the things that was discussed is if there are leftover funds, that we would address those bleachers and take care of them and make sure that we create a more, um, ADA-friendly and compliant, uh, space for, for our, our patrons. Um, so this is a, a state contract, it was not a, it was not a bid, um, but it really comes in, I think, much cheaper than what any of us thought we could replace bleachers with. Um, and certainly this is the, a, a great company. They do all of our, um, all of our repair work on our bleachers now, so, um, we have some experience with them. Um, but I would be open to any questions or comments about bleachers, um, certainly before we make any motions.
Linda Alderman, um, when we, um, first began this vision of improving all the schools in USD two ninety, I do know that the Visioning Committee talked about the bleachers at the high school a lot, especially,
You're bad.
Yeah, especially the fact that a lot of grandparents come to watch their grandchildren play and the fact that they're not ADA compliant. They, they have a hard time, uh, getting up into those bleachers. So I think this is something that we really need to look at.
Chris here.
I was trying to, maybe if you scroll down, I was right here, Dean. Like the, yeah, so on up, it says in the thing, ten and a quarter inch rise and twenty-four inch span. I was just hoping that the ten and a quarter is actually split up between, so you can see the part that slides and you see the little rectangle there, that would be the step. I was hoping our ten and a quarter is not from the elongated piece up that that's actually split between the two, because if we're talking about grandma and grandpa coming to watch games, ten and a quarter is a pretty good step.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I, I tried looking through everything to see, like, measurements to see where the ten and a quarter. I know the twenty-four inch span is that run between seat to seat.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that. I can certainly find out.
I was hoping you would.
I don't, I don't know.
So, do we need to take action on this tonight?
I had another question. Um, are there other companies that we could look to, like, to put out an RFP?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know bleacher companies. Um, we could certainly put out an RFP, um, but they were in doing some bleacher work for us and really what we had them do was try to take a look and see if we could retrofit our current bleachers, um, which was gonna take out a number of, of seats, was gonna look awful, um, and was definitively going to be a retrofit. Um, and we still have a very ugly bleacher system, uh, in, in our gym. So while they were there, I had Daryl ask them to write up a, a bid to replace the entire bleacher system. And it came back much cheaper than I thought it would be to, um, to replace the, the entire system. So, uh, as we put it out there in the update, um, again, typically my, my attitude towards the update, if I don't get a response, then people are okay with moving forward. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. So if, if it's not the right thing to do, certainly, um, we can, we can go down a different path.
Dr. Cobb, Harold Winger, um, I did respond to you and I am, uh, I am a proponent to, uh, fix the bleachers. Uh, I do think, uh, you know, I didn't know it was nineteen ninety-one, but I knew they were pretty old. And I do think we, we have a lot of elderly, uh, participants and even some of us that aren't so elderly would like a handrail from time to time. Uh, my only thought was, uh, you know, to send out an RFP, so, uh, but I don't want to, uh, say that just because we're doing RFP that we're going against the project. If, if we send out an RFP, which I'm okay with doing, I think we, it would be, hopefully, that we would state in a positive fashion that we're for the project, but we still want to send out for an RFP. Uh, so I guess that's my thought is, um, I'm certainly for the project. I agree with you, a retrofit probably doesn't really make much sense, um, especially if you attended a few games and saw that taking out that many seats would impact seating capacity already. So, uh, I'm okay with sending out RFP, I just hope, as I said to you several weeks ago, I'm in favor of replacing it.
I would agree, I'm, it needs to be done and I think that would be better than the retrofitting, but I would like to see us put out a, put out the RFP. We've seen two examples here recently that there is a possibility that we could save money and I would like to make sure that we are doing the most with the money that we have.
Um, I know I was a late email to you and I apologized for that. Um, but I had since kind of, because I didn't have, I had a little heartburn spending the money, but then after I found out, one, how old they were, um, two, that these were the bleachers that we had an accident on, uh, changed my mind. Um, I just, I don't know, I guess I'm at the RFP thing as well, but, um, I do apologize for being a late notice to you, but, um, I am for replacing them, I just didn't realize bleachers cost this much.
Yeah, they're expensive, they're expensive.
Dr. Cobb, Shanda Almstead, do we have time to do the RFP process and still get them done in time for next basketball? Or I, excuse me, it would be volleyball.
Yeah, um, that'll, I mean, certainly we're going to see, um, a large window of opportunity open for us, right? So, I mean, we can, we can have this conversation about turf. What we initially thought would be a, a May date to start construction, we can start certainly much quicker. Um, so we can put out an RFP, it, it isn't gonna be, um, like, like RFPs that are gonna need a month for people to, to come in. We can put out a two-week RFP, we can get notice out there, they can come in, they can look, they don't, probably don't even need to come in and look at the gym, get dimensions and, and, and create a mock-up. So it's not a, it's not a huge deal, um, to create an RFP and get it out there and that's a, a discussion I can have with, with Daryl tomorrow. Um, and we could probably have something ready by the end of April. Um, it'll be dependent upon, um, those companies at that point in time to determine whether or not, um, they have the ability to, to work now. One of the things that, that we have to remember is that the summer is the off-season for, for gymnasiums. So, um, you're gonna see a, a number of those companies that may have, um, opportunities already booked because that's when, that's the only time schools have open gyms. Um, whether they're, whether we're talking about, uh, floor refinishing and surfacing or bleachers, uh, because any other time during the year, they're gonna have to give up spaces to do so. So, but we can certainly do that.
Is there any way, like, I'm just thinking of the, the bus idea, that is there any way they could use any of these materials if we do away with the old bleachers?
Um, so one of the things that I believe was in, was in this one was that our, we could save, I think, ten thousand dollars if our staff removed them and, and.
I was just thinking outside the box.
I would imagine that there's a great deal of money in, um, recycling the amount of metal that's in those bleachers, uh, that would save us, um, some dollars. I, I don't know how much would be used to, to be able to retrofit something like that. Maybe a couple of the, of the plastic seat areas, but we've got a bunch of those sitting in the, in the warehouse right now, just in case something breaks here, that look a lot better than the ones that are, that are sitting.
How old are our other bleachers, just so we know we have enough overlap between the two gyms?
Um, I wanna say that, um, that the new gym was built in ninety-one, so they may, they may be the same.
Era.
Same era.
But they're, are they handicap accessible or, mm, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Cobb, Shanda Almstead, so at this point, should we not only look at the north gym, but the south gym? Because we have grandparents in that gym too.
Certainly can, certainly can. If we want to put an RFP out to look at both, then we certainly can. I would tell you that for whatever reason, and maybe it's because of use, the, um, so one, the, the south gym, um, is not mechanical. It is, it is a hand-pulled system and that gym is not used near as often as the north gym. So the bleachers are not in, in near the condition that the north gym, uh, bleachers are. The north gym is a mechanical piece, um, that constantly has issues. Um, and, and certainly the technology is now dated in terms of what we could do with, with bleachers otherwise. And you see so many bleachers now that, um, that are built to have messages and whatnot in them when they're closed or when they're open, that would provide some, some greater sense of pride within that space than, than you see in other, uh, than other areas. But, um, I don't know that the, other than the ADA piece, the need for new bleachers in the south gym is not near as dire as the need for them in the north gym.
Yeah, but I see what she says, I mean, all it takes is that one liability.
Or if we could fit them, not necessarily replace them, at least have.
Probably much easier to do some retrofit there.
Retrofit them, I think, I would like to see at least that dollar figure.
From having the company look at them both.
Sure.
Uh, Dr. Cobb's Julie D'Andrio here. Um, I definitely support replacing the bleachers, we, we need to make them ADA compliant and also, um, make sure that we follow through with our, with what we promised to that community back when we had that vision group, um, right before the bond was passed. Um, what I am hearing from the group is that maybe we're not ready to make, take any action tonight, but requesting that you, um, give us some more information, um, and we proceed with it at a different meeting.
Yep, we can definitely do that.
Would it help if we went ahead and make a motion to, uh, go out to RFP, so?
I don't think the board has to approve, um, the motion for an RFP. We can, we can do that here. I think the, the board has been very clear that they would, um, that they would entertain that, um, that opportunity and would be supportive of it. So I think we can, we can certainly do that without a board motion.
Very good.
Thank you.
Dr. Cobb, two things, I was wondering, Susan Ward, two things. One is how quickly they could get it done. So does that mean both are down for the fall season or not, you know, for volleyball? I think those type of questions to be asked, and the other is the funding source. Is it bond, is it not bond, is it, you know, so what is the plan for that? Just to not, you don't have to answer it tonight, but some other time, you know, just so we know where, which pot it's coming out of.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Susan. All right, thank you, Dr. Cobb. We are moving down to personnel. Um, we do need to go into executive session tonight, um, and we need to invite, uh, Dr. Cobb's with us. We will need about thirty minutes. If somebody would like to read the executive session statement in relation to personnel.
How long did you say, thirty?
Thirty minutes, please.
You do it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
All right, go for it.
Uh, I move that the board go into executive discussion to discuss personnel matters to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma and that the open meeting shall resume at eight forty in the boardroom and we invite Dr. Cobb's to the meeting as well.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes seven oh.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes seven oh.
I don't have it, but I like it.
Oh.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I know. I know. Feel your, feel your presence.
I don't know how many times.
Just carry it out or fill in else.
Do you?
I feel bad for you.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we need a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes seven oh. We need to go back into executive session for another thirty minutes. If somebody could again please read the recommended action including Dr. Cobb's please.
I move that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma and that the open meeting shall resume at nine ten.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes seven oh.
I'm so sorry, I was ready to give.
Thank you.
I was ready.
I think there's concern about that.
She's real concerned about that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we need a motion please to come back into session.
And then we come back in.
Second, all in favor raise your right hand. That passes seven oh. We need ten more minutes to invite Dr. Cops back for personnel related issues. If someone would please read the statement again.
Somebody else?
I move that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma and that the meeting show open at nine twenty and we invite Dr. Cops.
Second. All in favor raise your right hand. That passes seven oh.
Dean, we'll be back.
Hey.
At least the wind isn't blowing and baking all the vents.
So are you gonna check in tonight or tomorrow?
Well, I'm not checking in tonight. No one asked me.
Good for you. Good for you.
Two thirds of my staff, I just shut them down.
Good for you.
Yeah, be careful.
Yes, you have to be out following the guy.
And why did they bring that steam bus to us in the middle of all this? Because I was so excited.
Okay, I need a motion please to go back into regular session.
So moved.
That was the highlight of the night.
Don't make me use this.
That was great.
Yes, I make a motion.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that passes 7-0, and we are, let's see.
Board report, personnel report.
No, we are personnel. So you've all been presented a personnel report. If there is a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0, and now we are down to another.
Okay, so real quick and we'll get everybody out of here. We will have to have a special meeting for waiver. I will put it in the, in the update this week, but we probably need to have some conversations as to whether or not we all feel comfortable continuing to meet in this capacity, or whether we want to start doing a Zoom meeting. But we'll gather some information from the board. There's, there's really not a lot of reason to discuss it tonight, but certainly we, we probably need to think about that. The, the special meeting to address the waiver might best be done in a, in a, in a, in a Zoom meeting so that we don't have to all come back together. But you will, you will certainly get that information prior to that meeting. You can look through it, and then we, even with a Zoom meeting, there'll be public opportunity to hear exactly what, what it states. But just so you know, it's a very generic document. There won't be anything specific about first graders doing this, second graders doing this. It'll be a very generic document, but that's all I've got.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Yeah.